All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order here. That time, so if everybody will stand up for the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask that you bless this meeting and the people of tenants. In Jesus' name we pray.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of our own Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, glad to see a few faces this time around. I missed Tim. How you doing?
I'm good, how's it going?
Not too bad, not too bad.
Yeah, they've stuck with me for a couple of months.
Oh, I am happy for that, so. All right, number one on here is the approval of Resolution 916-2020, Resolution of Support and Letter of Support for an Affordable Housing Project for Affordable Homes Development. Okay. You wanna talk to me? I'm ready for you.
You're ready?
I'm ready.
We're ready.
All right.
I'm Joe Carmichael, this is my wife Marie, and Eric Anderson's our project coordinator. And you may not know, but we're the folks that did the Woodlands first project over across from the school on Kloy Street. And we came back here a couple of years, well, how many years has it been? We proposed another project near the school, and the state decided not to fund it. So today, we have what we think's a better proposal than the one we submitted before. And that is, we're gonna call it Woodlands 2. It's gonna look very much like Woodlands. And it's gonna be located on the Owen property. And we recently signed an agreement with the Owen last Friday, actually. So we've been in discussions for a while, but we actually got the documentation by everybody who needed to do that. So what I'm gonna do is pass around a site plan, or our proposed site plan, if I can. I don't know if this is in your packet or not, but you might be able to see this one better. If you like a prettier one.
It's bigger, it's bigger.
This one's bigger, and if your eyes are like mine, you need the bigger one. So, you know, essentially, it's gonna be an affordable housing project, as the mayor mentioned. And in order to go through that process with the state, we need a resolution by the city supporting it. And that's usually accompanied by a letter from the mayor, and that's what we're really here for today. And we also like the opportunity to get your input and to answer any questions about the property. Then we will come back with a replating for this property at your next meeting in October. So this is kinda step one. And step two, the replating really would be pretty simple, because the plaque that exists has a lot of roads, and a lot of curves, and a lot of lots in it. And essentially, we're gonna get rid of that, and we'll have one large lot that we'll put this apartment complex on. And then there'll be a commercial lot on the front, and we'll be on the back with our apartment complex. So makes it a lot simpler, makes it a lot simpler in terms of access and ingress to the property. And so that'll be chapter two next month. So assuming that you're on board with this tonight, that's the direction we're headed. I'll actually turn it over to Marie, and she can talk a little bit about what we intend to put there, the kind of tenants and the kind of project that we're proposing.
You've got the plaque, and notice there's a road coming into it, and we're on about 10 and 1/2 acres, I believe. And this will be a really low-density development, and we'll put 40 units on it, which for 10 and 1/2 acres is really very low-density. But that's kind of what we like to do in terms of size for development. It'll be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. We don't have any ones at Woodlands, and we really have a need for them, so we're gonna put some. At this point, we're looking at eight ones, eight threes, and the rest two. But that may change a little after we get the market study done. We've hired a market analyst to come down and analyze the property. We know there's a need, because we have over 180 people on our waiting list.
I was gonna say, where is the waiting list at right now? Is it?
It's over 180.
Yeah, I knew it was big.
It's big, it's big. And the other thing about our tenants at Woodlands that we really love is that they stay with us. We have had, Eric, how many new bats over the life of this project?
There've been three in the last three years.
In the last three years, we've had three turnovers, which is just totally unheard of. Joe, you might share with them, this is our development team, our references. And this shows our past developments. We finished Woodlands about 10 years ago. And it's just been a wonderful, wonderful project for us. We've had excellent tenants, you know.
I know that there was concerns from the school district at the beginning before the first Woodlands was put in. But that has gone by the wayside, because it's such, it looks beautiful all the time. And I know the tenants are good, you know, it just has been maintained well. How many units are in there?
Thirty-two. Thank you, Eric. The other half of our brain is here.
Yager hat.
Yeah, the yager hat. Thirty-two. And that, when we leased that, of course, we pre-leased it, because people were, we had maintained a waiting list and qualified people, of course, we do background checks, we do lots of stuff. And, but the week that we were able to move them in, we filled it out in one week. I mean, everybody moved in, because there was such a demand. So we think there's a really significant demand left based on the number of people. And we know the tenant population is really stable, so we like that, too. So it'll essentially be two buildings. We will have one 16-unit building and one 24-unit building, it'll probably go kinda like that. And we met tonight with the surveyor who's gonna be doing the survey, the project, so that we can replat it, for one thing, but we'll also need to get a topo just to see how that will work. Two of the units will be fully accessible, at least two of them, and that will include roll-in showers. And we find there's a real demand for accessible units among our older population. Interestingly enough, we have a lot of elderly people at Woodlands, you probably know that.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah. I know several of them, yeah.
Yeah. Let's see here. Some of the amenities, we'll actually put a playground on this one, we'll put, you know, a brightly colored slide swings and things like that. We will do barbecue grills, which I believe we get at Woodlands, we'll do park benches, we'll do a nice green space to them. Got the plaque, and Joe said, we'll see you again next month, providing that you pass the Resolution and the Letter of Support. Joe had reached out to the highway department already on the entrance. The entrance that was plotted, on the plots that's plotted now, was gonna have to be moved anyway, because the highway department felt like you'd come around a curve area. So they were gonna ask the owners to move that anyway. So he talked to the engineer for the area, and he said, you know, "Once you get the survey done, and I'll take a look at it, but I don't really, on its face, see any reason that we wouldn't, it would probably be better to move it where you want to put it." And so.
Further north.
Further north. And as soon as we get, well, the surveyor actually knows, once he gets enough of it done, he will talk to the highway department engineer, and we'll get that kinda squared away, because we need to cross our Ts and dot our Is. We wouldn't wanna submit this project if they didn't find out the intensity of it.
Right.
So we wanna make sure that that's our, and we will have a site plan, too, once we get that. But as I said, it'll be two buildings, green space, playground, parking.
And they're two-story buildings, so that's, nobody's gonna be looking into anybody's backyard. And there's enough land here that we will be nicely spaced away from any other folks that live in the area. And I think it's a great location.
We intend to leave as many trees as possible. The actual, we're gonna set this, if I could just borrow yours for one minute, I'm sorry, we just got hold of that. We are going to set these buildings, this is your commercial development, right here. And these buildings will be right underneath, they'll be between here, they'll be in this little area right there. Right there. And, 'cause that's the plot piece, obviously.
Right.
So we wanna take advantage of that nice area.
So just basically below the white rectangle with the Woodlands Shoe Site sign on it, right now?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking at, because that's the fly's piece, and we like to leave the wooded area around it. And what we're thinking is, this road will come in here and just turn around and come out, like that.
Okay.
So it'll have good fire access and.
Right. That's why I was relieved with it only being two-story for our fire department, too, so, yeah.
So you're gonna leave plenty of green space between the development and that residential subdivision?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We intend to use the same footprint of the Woodlands. Those are really nice spacious units, and people really like them.
Yeah.
Except that we have added a roll-in char for our accessible units, and I know those are loaded like that.
Yeah, they are.
We may do a few more of those, just depending on how things look down here, we'll just have to wait and see. The owners of the land have, they're the ones that set out how this should be replatted. I mean, and that we didn't care as long as we got to put our development where we wanted to put it. And they decided where they wanted the road, they decided they wanted a commercial. And really, the commercial will be way more marketable once we get some residents.
Right.
Because people wanna build a quick shop, or retail, or someplace to eat, or where they got folks that are gonna drive by every day. So we think that'll help them.
Yeah, the Owen family's gonna keep that, we're just gonna buy the back 10 and 1/2 acres.
They're keeping the commercial development.
Yes.
Right. And they're gonna sell that for a commercial, hopefully send a commercial into me. So with that, I would ask if you guys have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
No, you've done a good job, Eric.
Do I have any questions? I don't have any questions.
Okay. You have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 916-2020.
Second.
And the letter from the mayor.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your support, and we hope we can make this one work.
I love it, too. I love the other one, so I'm looking forward to it.
Well, we manage them ourselves, so we make sure, we have our own management company.
That's great.
So we make sure we, they're well taken care of.
Yes, they are. They're double-handed assed.
Thank you for your support, we cheer for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Larry Cook? You got there? Nope. All right, well, we're moving on then. Tenny County Fair Board Derby Approval. That's you?
That's me.
All right, let's hear it. I love the fact that the homework was done on this. I looked at this back page, and that is great.
I was hoping the homework ended up, and I wouldn't have to talk.
Sorry.
Never been short for words.
Nice try.
Yeah, this looks good. I mean, I'm excited to have some sort of normal back a little bit, you know? So having this derby is great.
There's gonna be a lot more things done, you know, other than the sanitizing stations.
Right.
I probably forgot to put stuff in there. We're gonna have one big entrance, one exit, where everybody's not coming eating head-on, and we'll have you coming in one way, going out the other. Other stuff, hopefully we get, we're gonna have, hopefully we got a sponsor for the personal little bottle of hand sanitizer.
Oh, awesome.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Well.
As far as where our cook shack is, I don't remember if I wrote it on there, so we're gonna try to keep, we're gonna string it on, try to keep everybody that's eating in one area.
Okay.
And keep it out of the seating and stuff like that, where people are more apt to eat from covering those.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when they're eating, they're not, yeah, they're.
It's gonna be hard, it's gonna be hard to keep them there without watching and.
It's the same, you know, we go to the ball game, and I've noticed, you know, video and pictures of kids, you know, they're all, their coverings on and stuff. But we're trying.
Yeah.
We're at least trying.
Yes.
And so same for Empire Fair, and I saw that they, they're at least trying. So, you know, the more that we can keep this at bay, the better. So, you know, we know that everybody's not gonna keep them on.
Oh, yeah.
It, I mean, I see it in the grocery store, so, but if we can have the majority, that's all the better.
Yes.
So, but some sort of normal, this is awesome. So you've done a good job here putting this all together, so.
This back page needs more than the rest of it.
Yeah. That's what I read through, I was like, oh my goodness, you really had it all out there, and anyways. I appreciate it. Yeah, we do.
I make the motion to approve the Tenny County Fair Board's Demolition Project.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you guys, everybody.
All right, we have accept the resignation of Police Officer Sean Fredmore. This makes me sad, but I know he's got bigger fish to fry, so. Anyway, he wrote a really nice letter here.
I make a motion to accept his resignation, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Shoals Bend Homeowners Association Policy. Oh, did I miss one? Oh, sorry. We got a new officer.
I did.
So, that's you, Mr. Chief.
For those who haven't met him, this is Joseph Water.
Well, we're glad to have you.
I'm thrilled to be here.
Yeah, and I love your beautiful family, too, so.
Heard that one, one something over, so.
When is your last date over there?
Okay, so, we've been having some issues with my contract over there. Contract stays September 27th, 18 is when I signed it, excuse me. So now they're trying to say that it has to be until my hire date, which is October 28th. But after speaking with a couple of the trustees over there, because they don't have a date or anything, it's just all trustees, speaking with a couple of them, they said, no, we have to go off the contract. So on September 27th, I'm gonna give them my final two weeks, and then I can start 100% full-time over here. Great.
Great, that's good.
In the meantime, yeah, he wants to come over here, and we can get outfitted with the best human uniforms, stuff like that, get him started with paperwork.
Yeah, we can get all of that taken care of beforehand and.
All that, so you can get the guy on and.
Right, exactly.
If that's just broken tits.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the hiring of this gentleman.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yep, go ahead.
Joseph Water.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Missouri, and to me and myself as a police officer and employee of the City of Forsyth, and honestly discharge the duties that are held on us to the best of my abilities, to help them out.
Okay, now that I'm not skipping stuff now. All right, I guess I need to just mark it up, because I seem to have trouble keeping track here. All right, now I'm ready for Shoals Bend Homeowners Association Policy.
Is Melissa here?
I'm just about there.
Okay.
Okay.
Melissa Hannah is the president of the HOA out there.
Okay.
She indicated that she would attend the meeting. We've got HOA, which is very detailed, and more restrictions out there than there are for the rest of the City of Forsyth. In those restrictions, number 18, they allow livestock, which is horses, up to two horses maximum only. We have, at this time, to the best of her count, one individual out there that's built a home and has a horse, another individual that's built a home and is going to purchase a horse, a third individual, a deputy, has just purchased a lot with the intent of having a horse. And what brought this to light was we had another gentleman come in that's gonna buy a lot, that wants a horse, and he was concerned that we have a no livestock ordinance in the City of Forsyth. And he wanted us to go ahead and make some kind of action on it. So what I was proposing was that we do grandfather it at this time, the ordinance.
Was this HOA already in place before we annexed it into the city limits? Yes. Yes, okay. All right, and so since that is the case, we need to go with what you already have for your HOA.
Right.
Yeah.
And we could go ahead and make a motion tonight, if nobody has objections, to grandfather it and follow up next month, give our legal beagle here a chance to write an ordinance ordinance to finalize that. But the gentleman that's looking at a lot right now said if we did this tonight, he would go ahead with the lot purchase and start issuing his plans to build a home. So, and you guys got a copy of this?
I read through it today, so.
The maximum of two horses.
Really?
And fencing has to be approved by the HOA on what kind of fencing they put up. I told Ms. Hannah, we don't wanna micromanage their HOA agreement, because it is so detailed and controlling compared to the rest of the city that.
Right.
Do your thing, we'll do an ordinance. Why make a motion to redo a grandfather of the law?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. We're set. Okay. All right, in our special meeting, we discussed body cameras, well, Chief did, body cameras. And so I asked him to put together three quotes, and so he has those, and there's a lot to them, too.
There is a lot. So where do you wanna begin?
Well, you begin, from the beginning here.
From the beginning?
Do you have a recommendation?
I do. I do like Axon, mostly because I've used it before, I know it works, and it's very user-friendly. They have big buttons on them to push, so if you've got gloves on, you're not messing with them in the cold. How Axon works is they're all cloud-based storage systems. So you can, you pull, you pull what you want off, you get stored on a hard drive, disk, or whatever. But you just plug it in, and it goes. You don't need anything special, other than just, just an internet. Now, the initial cost to start with these is like $9,441 makes sense. That includes your docking station, your software and everything. Then every year after that, you pay a fee. So that's the $4,506. So every year after that, for, and it's five years. Now what Axon will do is, every two years, they give you new cameras. It's, if you break it, they'll send you a new one. They are priced, I'll give you that, but they stand behind the product. And we have in there, and this other one was WatchGuard, and.
WatchGuard is who I met with before, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
They have the old cameras you can get with the free software.
Right, and I didn't like those.
But we asked them about, you know, being able to upload to the cloud and stuff like that, and they come up with, every time we call them and ask them a question, the price goes up. I think there's a lot of hidden costs in there. Because they gave us the first estimate at $5,976. And then we asked them about storage and uploading it, and it jumped it up to $15,000. So you can buy your own server.
Yeah, this is one of the discussions we had with them, but.
But it has to meet certain criteria.
Right, the criteria was.
So, and then you have Digital Ally. And I've talked to Digital Ally a couple times, they're a lot cheaper. They have some pluses and minuses to them. I know a lot of agencies use them, and a lot don't like them. But you're gonna need to get some sort of way to pay the server or something to store it, or you have to pay by the month for cloud storage. And you see on there, it's got a picture of the body camera?
Mm-hmm.
So now, it's $50 a month per camera for a 90-day retention. So, and then it goes up from there. So, and then their software and other stuff. The pluses with Digital Ally is they have a battery you can interchange in the field, and then they have a cord that hooks their battery pack that they made interchangeable. And so it used to be all wired in, so you had to send the whole camera in. And their cameras are smaller. So, so we have, we have that. I know Digital Ally's had some problems in the past, but they, and I talked to them in a conference, they said they're coming up in the world.
Okay.
The thing is, is they have a lot of small buttons and stuff like that that you push.
Now, my question here is, I'm gonna be talking money here.
Yeah.
And have you met with Angela to figure out what is doable here?
No, that was, we did not talk about that, we were just, we got the quotes, and we were looking into seeing what we had left over to work with.
Have you checked into grants on this, because there are some available?
There, they are, but there are really not any grants out there right now. They've had a few, but there, there's not a whole lot of grants that I know of, because we've looked at a few, I've called all the agencies out there, and grants are really limited this year.
Angela, I know the tax came in a little more than we thought even, or a little less than we thought even. So, is this, I mean, any of these gonna work?
I can't find anywhere that we can cut any further than we've already cut, okay.
What's the annual fee on the Digital Ally?
I don't know what the annual fee is, what it's gonna be with your story. So that is, if you look on there, it's a 90-day retention plan, it's $50 a month, that's per camera, and you take that times six, so you're gonna be paying $300 a month, every month, forever.
Does that include use of the cameras?
Yeah, you buy the cameras outright.
We would have to have a server.
So there's another front hardware cost for the camera.
That's costly itself, especially with the, the ours IT service that we have, so...
I think the cameras are a necessary evil, but...
I do too, but I...
With our income down, and we've had a lot of big expenses, through no fault of our own...
Yeah.
I hesitate to go ahead with this unless we go try every grant out there, keep digging on it.
I will, I'll get, I may get with Viola and see where she was at with that particular grant she was working on.
I think that was through the Bex.
Okay. It was, but you, they'll do about any of those, as long as we've got a cost, you know? And so, anyway, I, I'm going to rely on Angela here, and, because we, we have to balance our budget, so...
There's two grants primarily for body cameras, and the one just closed in August for the federal grant. The state, as long as they do what they've done in the past, will open up their grant period beginning of the year for the equipment grants, which is basically for officer safety, which I think this could be argued as an officer safety piece of equipment. But it has a max of $10,000 project cost, so it would go a long way towards it.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't completely cover, and it is very competitive. There are a few private foundations that will fund camera projects. We have to be very, very set and thorough in our policy adoption, as far as how we use the cameras, how we train the officers, how we deal with the video after it is created. Those, those policies count bonus points towards the federal grant application, which will be in the fall again. And then there are also corporate giving programs that might be another way. You know, Firehouse Subs does equipment grants for departments. There are many corporations that do that, and we'll just have to do some serious looking.
Yeah. Chris, do you feel the same way here?
Yeah, I went through all the department's budgets with Angela, and we just can't find, can't find the money without stripping. I mean, we've shut down capital improvement completely, a lot of things, and we, we tried really hard to, to try to find the money, and it's just not there.
Well, especially since it looks like we're at eight, maybe 18%?
Eighteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down, and so, and so that is a pretty good hit, so...
That doesn't mean we're going to give up on...
No, we don't need, we definitely need this, I mean, so...
I know a grant writer that I'm going to contact.
Okay.
She's a retiree from Kansas that I've gotten to know, and she's, she does this kind of on the side, and she's been doing it for a living.
Okay.
And she's indicated she'd be willing to help.
That'd be great. So, anything that we can do to try to get some assistance for this, that would be great, because these are definitely necessary. We know that, especially for our officer safety.
But I do agree with David on the Axon, as far as, after reading, reading, and reading, and rereading all three of the bids, I believe, that's the best one for the money, when you, when you factor in all the hidden costs, and the $50 here, and this here, and the...
Right.
The warranty's a huge thing, I mean, if they just drop them in the pond, they're covered.
Yeah.
And they're covered immediately, we're not going to wait for them to be repaired for six months and have an officer without a camera.
Well, David, not to stomp on your thing, and I appreciate you going to what, doing what we asked you to do on that and stuff, but at this point, we're just going to put it a little bit on hold, and we'll keep digging, okay?
All right.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. So, do we have a motion to table this?
So I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay. Resolution 2120, solid waste representative appointment. Okay, so...
The representative, Jack, I think, is the, is the co-representant, have been for years, but we just have to re-up it.
All right.
I say those two names go really well, it's called...
He didn't even hear it.
It's not worth repeating.
Yes, it is.
Oh, those are the...
Dave, did you get that on camera? I'll be watching this tonight. The ring is spordin'.
You make a motion, you may have problems with the solid waste in home.
You second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I control your solid waste, you don't remember that. A lot of solid waste.
Larry, yeah, Larry did, yeah. I know. All right, approved Tany County Response Plan to Active Shooter Policy, police and fire.
I'm assuming by approved, you mean adopt for our purposes?
Correct, so two things is, I'm asking for, to be able to approve this policy as well as sign a document with the TCAD as the driving factor on this. This plan has been, the process has been in play for probably two years, and we've been working together with EMS, fire, and law enforcement on this plan, which is a very big struggle, and hurdle that we got through. Because used to, none of us necessarily played together and was on the same page, and in the last two years, pending the COVID issue, we went through training and worked together, and, and did response planning and stuff with this, and so this is kind of the dotting your keys, kind of putting it, putting ink on the paper to be able to say, yeah, all the agencies are in favor, and this is a good policy, we agree with.
So then we would have to officially adopt this as part of our policy then, is that also...
Department policy, yes.
Yeah.
Any policy has to be approved, that's the... We do, I, you know, we've had a few questions and answers back and forth, and, you know, each agency's been represented in it. We've, we've all been, or most of us been through the training, I mean, we're very supportive in it for sure. It's a good, a good thing to have. It's great to be able to work with law enforcement, EMS, and be able to train together and be on the same page, because...
It takes all the guesswork.
Yeah, it does.
Everybody knows where to go with it.
Right.
So, training on this will be in the future then, more?
Yeah, there's more, it kind of got shut, it got shut down with COVID, but, and it's real, you know, real active training. It was an all-day, about a 14-hour class, between classroom and actual practical skills of doing the active shooter, or what we call officer training, active shooter hostile event response training.
So is this, just one motion then, to adopt, or...
Yeah.
Why don't we have a motion to adopt this for both departments?
Okay.
I make the motion, we adopt the Tany County Response Plan to Active Shooter Hostile Event for our police and fire departments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Department of Conservation, no, what, yeah, Department of Conservation, Grant, Nathan?
Yes, so you should have just the front page of the grant application, this is the application we try to apply for every year. It's a matching, a 50% match grant to conservation, so the max grant is 8,000 is what you, so if we apply for 8,000, we recover 5, or 4,000, excuse me, the amount. So, we've had good positive things coming out of this grant. Two years ago, we were able to purchase, we used two motion radio, portable radios, and so what I'm proposing to be able to apply for is radios. The two main things they like you to see is PPEs, so personal protective equipment, for, you know, wide-line calls, and then radio communications, that's their two priorities, that they need to actually state and call them in the grid. This would be a fire tax-funded portion, be able to pay them, pay them matched. Our current portable radios, most of them are going on eight, nine years, so we're reaching their threshold disparities and issues with radios, so...
I would make the motion to approve the request for the grant.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and we have the minutes of August 17, 2020, and September 3, 2020. Anybody have any questions over those?
Motion to approve them from August 17 and September 3, 2020. Second, motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, bills for approval. You got to read it. A max.
Balls to that side of the room.
Yeah, it does.
I've heard it so many times, I still don't know if I can do. I make a motion to approve the bills for August 27, 2020, in the amount of $1,458.50, for September 3, 2020, for $38,992.20, for September 20, 2020, in the amount of $22,385.06, and for September 17, 2020...
No, yeah, okay, sorry.
In the amount of $3,042.82. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice job. There's a lot.
I love these papers, man.
Right off the top of my head.
Okay, financial statements, Angela?
Hi, your first page is comparing your cash balances across funds between this year and last year. We are only down slightly over last year's fund balance for August 31. We ended the year budget-wise with an improvement to our net position in both the general fund and the water fund, not a lot, but a little. The auditor, the independent auditors are getting ready to come in, they'll be in here the 20th and 21st of October to do their field work, and we'll be moving forward on that. The reserve requirements that we've set as goals for the city are on your second page. General fund is lower than we'd like it, but one of the things that changes that number substantially is when we have a large project, like the road project we had in the last budget. So just based on the pulling those numbers out and seeing where we are, that reserve percentage is going to improve with the removal of that capital project. It will bring us back up, probably in the 25% range where we'd like to be.
Okay, good.
So, some of that's just a mountain problem.
Yeah.
I have one other thing I've been working on, trying to save a dollar. We have seven or eight phone lines into City Hall. We have three different internet connections through a different provider, and I've been talking with both of those, trying to improve our, our bandwidth, because it really stinks.
Right.
We are 356 feet from fiber optic, and I have yet to get, I'm on my fourth CenturyLink rep in last year, so I'm hoping that this fourth one will stay long enough to get me a written quote. But looking at what they have to offer, it will be much improved internet speeds, and it will provide a new phone system that is voice-over-internet protocol-based, not a traditional landline, but an internet phone. The equipment and all of the other services that we require at a cost of about $500 a month, less than we are paying now.
Oh, wow.
But we have to make a five-year commitment to that, and the price would remain flat for those five years. No guarantees on the...
That's standard, though.
Yes, because they're building something for us.
Right, yeah.
MediaCom has given me a decent bid, as far as the service is comparable on what we need, and the phone system and all that, but it's not much of a savings, about $40 a month over what we currently pay. So, I'm going to be working through that with CenturyLink, trying to figure out what the numbers are, and I didn't want to surprise you with it, that you didn't know it was coming, so I'm hoping this new person can stay long enough to give us a written answer, and then get it moving forward.
Number four?
Number four. Other than that, our financials, we're starting on a new budget, so it looks really good right now.
Yeah, it is standard to commit to one of these companies like this for a long period of time. I did it at the school district, I would have to commit for three to five years, and it, the price goes down the longer you commit, so, so that is standard.
Do you have to do something for that, or?
Nope.
Just be aware that you are out there working hard for that?
I'm trying, I appreciate it.
Good job, thank you.
I'm taking those to approve the financial statement.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of transfers from August 20, 2020, through September 17, 2020.
I make the motion to approve the transfers from August 20, 2020, to September 17, 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody have anything they want to add?
I've got a little bit.
Okay.
We signed the, we signed the agreement today with MoDOT on the roundabout, so that's one step closer.
Yay.
And, so, as soon as that, as soon as that comes back around, I'll bring it to the, back to put it on the agenda. We're making good time in the park, we're going to probably at the end of this week have that side of the park open, and not the back.
The playground side?
Playground side.
Okay.
We disaffected all the, all the playground equipment, and I've talked to Mr. Galey and see if his FFA guys can come down and help us paint a little bit of the park and get the playground equipment, the playground, things like that.
That's great, because I do know, I've seen, and, and I've heard from a few people, that they're, they're anxious to get back in there.
Oh, yeah. I hear it from them.
I'm sure you do.
They in night. They in night.
Yeah.
Especially the fishermen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're working hard on it.
I did see grass growing, at least.
Yeah, it's strange, it actually has a way of healing itself, but it'll be back.
That's great.
That's all I got right now.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Anything? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.